Maintain some form of physical distancing. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. This meeting is a work-study session only and allows the city council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this meeting, and there will be no opportunity to provide public comment. Thank you for joining our Glendale City Council Workshop.
All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of August 24, 2021. The meeting is called Order. We do have all of our council present, so we're not going to do a roll call. Ms. Bauer, you've got the floor.
All right. Redistricting discussion. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we kick off the redistricting process. The city charter requires that the six council districts contain a substantially equal population in each district. And Section 15-2 of the city code requires council to redistrict once every 10 years based on the U.S. Decennial Census. Census data was not released until August 12th, which is substantially later than the normal March release. The city must submit a council-adopted plan to Maricopa County by December 15, 2021. Because of the late release of the census data, the timeframe for the redistricting process has been severely compressed. Today, we are seeking council direction on redistricting criteria. I've provided the 2011 criteria that was adopted, and as you'll see from the presentation, it's pretty standard criteria. We need direction on the number of community workshops to be held or public meetings, the public mapping options, and then the number of council workshops where council would like to discuss the proposed maps. So, right now, I'll turn it over to Douglas Johnson and Ivy Bellersakansky, our National Demographics Corporation team, for the presentation.
Before you get started, I'd ask both of you, when you do speak, speak into your microphone, hold it up lip level, and speak clearly. It's difficult to hear sometimes. You've got the floor. Go ahead.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Julie. As you mentioned, my name's Doug Johnson. I'm the president of National Demographics Corporation and very happy to be back here again. It's been our firm's blessing to be able to work with the city a number of times now, and we always find it interesting and fun to be out here. Small trivia, I actually live in Glendale, California, so it always trips up my wife when I tell her I'm here, and she doesn't see me at the house. So, good to see you all again. Again, I'm Doug Johnson, and this is Ivy, and she's going to kick us off with starting about the schedule.
It's nice to see you all. Glad to be here. The schedule, as Julie had mentioned, is extremely compressed this cycle. Normally, we would get our U.S. Census data the last day in March, the 31st, but because of COVID this year, it did get delayed five and a half months, and we finally received it on August 12th, just two weeks ago. So, in terms of your schedule throughout this process, in September, there will be community workshops, and we are looking for guidance on how many of those workshops. And the purpose will be to solicit input into the map redrawing process and the various criterion that I assume you're familiar with, or we will help you get familiar with. In November, we had envisioned potential council deliberations on November 9th, and on November 23rd, potentially council adoption of your final map. And as Julie had mentioned, the county has requested to have the adopted map by December 15th so that they can do their final record-keeping and tweaks, as is needed. And we just wanted to mention that the statutory deadline is February 2nd of 2022. But again, the county had requested the maps by December 15th. And now, I'll turn it back over to Doug.
So, in terms of criteria, we have different sets of criteria. So, some of you have been through this process before. No doubt, remember, the federal laws are, of course, come first, so we have the equal population requirement. We have to be sure to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act and its requirements. At a very basic level, that boils down to if there's a neighborhood that's heavily, what the law calls a protected class, so here we're talking Latinos in Glendale, then we can't divide up that neighborhood in a way that dilutes their voting strength. So, that's the key, basic rule. At the same time, federal law says no racial gerrymandering. So, race can be one consideration, but it can't be with the Supreme Court calls the predominant consideration. So, that's why I talk about if there's a neighborhood that's predominantly a protected class, we want to keep it together. So, the neighborhood is predominant. As you'll see in a moment, we have charts showing city block by city block ethnic percentages, and can't just essentially draw the lines based on those colors, because that's when race becomes predominant. So, that's the federal requirements. They've been around a long time. We're very familiar with them. Similarly, you have Arizona statutes calling for a nearly equal number of inhabitants and contiguous territories. So, you can't have a district that's one part of a city and then jumps over to another part of the city. All the parts of the districts have to touch. So, that still leaves a lot of flexibility.
I do want to ask you a question on that. So, that would be excepting for where we have county islands in between?
Exactly right.
Okay. All right. I just want to clarify. Okay.
Yes, no. The rule is essentially no district should be between two other districts.
Okay.
But you're right, a county island or anything like that wouldn't count as a split. And similarly, as was mentioned, the city charter has a requirement of equal population that essentially mirrors the Arizona statute. So, that still leaves flexibility and different options in how the lines will be drawn, and that's where your, both the public input and then your ultimate decision come in, in balancing with the courts have called traditional redistricting principles. This is the list of things on the right. These are not statutory requirements, but they are things that the courts have said are appropriate and traditional redistricting considerations. So, you see the list there. The big one is always communities of interest, trying to keep neighborhoods together, neighborhoods that want to be together. Then, we want to be compact and contiguous and follow visible boundaries. The compact and the follow-visible, easily recognizable boundaries is really for the voters. When they want to go out and knock on doors, you want it to be easy to tell them which doors to knock on in that district. So, you want to try to avoid zigzagging through neighborhoods and that kind of thing, and try to follow major roads whenever you can. Respecting voters' choices, or sometimes referred to in court cases as continuity in office, this is the idea of keep each council member in their district. Essentially, sometimes people ask, "Why do you do that?" I say, "Well, it's to leave the reelection decisions up to the voters." If each council member's in their district, the voters get to decide which council members have earned reelection, as opposed to the lines dictating to them, "Oh, we're going to put these two together." Doesn't matter if the voters want to reelect both, you can only reelect one. So, that is a very common consideration that the courts have said is perfectly acceptable, and it is traditional in all the Arizona local redistrictings to do that. Then, a traditional criterion is planned future growth. The courts have said you can under-populate a district by a little bit if you know it's going to grow more. That's usually not done here in Arizona because of the statute and your charter provision calling for nearly as equal a number as possible, but that is something you may have a little bit of flexibility on. Then, other considerations, minimizing voter shift into different election years. This is if someone is currently in a district that's going to be up in 2022, we want to try to keep them in a 2022 district. People tend to get upset if they're expecting to vote in 2022 and they get postponed to 2024. Some of that is often inevitable in redistricting, but we do try to minimize that. On the flip side, some people may be in a 2024 seat and get moved into a 2022 seat and get to vote faster, but they don't usually complain. People don't usually mind that as much as being postponed. And similarly, preserving the core of existing election districts. This is the idea that the residents have organized, they've worked together on elections for the last 10 years, they know who else is in the district, they know the issues of the district. So, it's traditional to try to not disrupt those relationships if it's not necessary to do so for some other goal. So, all the things on the right, those are not in any specific order. Those are all different things you can consider, and the residents can consider, and then ultimately, you would adopt the best map that complies with the requirements on the left, and then has the best balance of the other considerations on the right. So, next slide to put some numbers to things. As Ivy mentioned, this data just came out, August 12th, and so you can see the, as you probably have heard at this point, the total population for the city is 248,325. It's about 20,000 growth over the last decade. And the growth was actually remarkably even across the city. You can see some districts where there are negative numbers, that means that they're short of the ideal, the total of the city divided by six. It doesn't mean they lost population, they just didn't grow as fast as the other districts. And so, you can see the smallest district currently is Choya. Up north, it's about 6% short of the target population. And then, the largest district is actually Cactus, at about 4% over, and then closely followed by Yucca at 3.3% over the target population. So, federally, you have a range of 10% between the largest and smallest, is counted as balanced, so you're just outside that range. But as we just mentioned, Arizona law actually calls for it nearly as equal as possible. So, last time around, there was a 1% difference between the largest and smallest when the plan was adopted. So, we'd be looking to get down close to that when we're balancing them out. So, the other consideration mentioned, the other federal consideration is the Voting Rights Act. This is that map I mentioned. It's called the heat map. The blues and purples are 35% of citizens of voting age. That's what CVAP is, Citizen Voting Age Population. Latinos are 35% or less in the blues and purples, in the dark blues and purples, 35 to 50 in the light blues, and then a majority of the citizen voting age population in the yellows, in the light greens, yellows, and reds. These maps can be a little misleading just by color. Out by Luke, you see the big pink census blocks that show 75 to 100% Latino. Those numbers are accurate, but there's only a couple of people there. That often tends to be like, oh, 75% of all four people are Latino kind of thing. So, really, those numbers are not going to influence the demographics of your districts or the voting power of any group. Really, where we're focusing is over in where Yucca, Ocatillo, and Cactus come together, where you see the concentration in densely populated areas that we want to pay attention to when drawing districts. The other question for you tonight, in addition to the outreach question that was mentioned, is we do have some public mapping tool options that are not required, but at your discretion, we can put out to the public. They vary from paper map that has population numbers on it. That's what we put out 10 years ago. And then, people can put those little units together and draw their districts and then add up the numbers. It's kind of fun. You often see their math right on the side of the paper as they've added up the numbers. With that comes an Excel sheet that can do the math for them if they're comfortable with Excel. That's one option, kind of a basic. Anyone can either pick up the sheet at City Hall or download it from the city website, print it out, and draw their districts. In order to help people review the demographics, such as the Latino numbers I just looked at and other demographic data we'll provide, we do put up a story map. It's a really easy kind of online walkthrough of the city's geography and demographics, and an interactive review map, which is, it's not Google Maps, but it's as easy to use as Google Maps, where people will be able to review the draft maps. And it's simply a list of draft maps, and they click which ones they want to see, and they can overlay two on top of each other to see where they vary. So, those things, we just give you as part of the project, because it makes the public participation process really easy for them to weigh in on the different maps. The last option is a tool called District R, which we've been using with some jurisdictions and getting a lot of interest in. It's a really simple-to-use online mapping tool. So, it is online, so people do have to go have internet access, but literally, all it has in tools is a paintbrush and an eraser. And then, we put in all the demographic data, we put in the boundaries, and they can zoom in, and they can essentially, they color in their neighborhood if they want to do that, or multiple neighborhoods, or they can go ahead and paint in a whole district map. So, really easy to use. It does involve a little extra expense because of the hosting fees and processing of the submitted maps, but that is an option for you to consider. They would be new from last time. So, that is our main focus tonight, is number one, to answer any questions you may have about this process, and then, number two, to get your direction on the number of workshops and on what public mapping options you wish to include in the project, if any. That concludes our presentation, and happy to answer any questions or discuss any elements of this situation.
I think we include all the mapping tools. I like them all.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would concur with Councilmember Mounar that we just include all the mapping tools that are available and let people participate to the degree that they feel most comfortable. I've got a few questions in this, some are, they're just general redistricting questions, for instance. So, you've shown us information that, I guess, is census tract or census block data based on the demographics colored in. How do those relate to precincts, which most of us, I think, are familiar with? And when a census block maybe gets moved from one district to another, that's got to affect the precinct somehow. How does that, what's that process work out like?
Sure. So, the blocks are smaller than precincts, as you can tell from the map. And so, when this process is over, that's actually the primary reason for the December 15th date from the county being the deadline, is they will take the map that you adopt, and they will alter the precinct lines to follow those lines. So, precincts tend to change fairly regularly, and after every redistricting, they do change.
So, the changes at the census block level then actually drive what the eventual precinct looks like?
Exactly.
And somehow, that's got to be correlated with the other districts that are happening as well, at the county level and at the state level?
Yes. As Ivy mentioned, your statutory deadline isn't until early February, but the county has put this deadline in December 15th because they do have to do all that work of, you know, the city, the county subasorial districts, if your school district's used by your reelections, those all go in, and of course, the state lines. The state legislative and congressional districts all play into that. There's a lot of things that they have to factor in when they're drawing those precinct lines, definitely.
One of the things I actually appreciated most about your presentation, as you presented very much from the voter's point of view, and that's really what this process is, is it's not about keeping districts intact for the sake of the office holder. It's about keeping them as intact as possible for the sake of the voters that live there, and having identifiable boundaries so that they can easily determine what district they live in and what its boundaries are, and they don't necessarily need to get out a magnifying glass, just, you know, hopefully, unless they live on those little fringes where population differences are accommodated, then they can easily tell where they live and that they don't have freeways dividing them unnecessarily or that sort of thing. So, I appreciated that point of view, and I think it's very healthy. Along those lines, you'd also mentioned public meetings. What's typical for a city in the way of public meetings? One before drafts and one after the set of drafts, or no public meetings, or what's typical, or what might you recommend for a city our size?
You know, it really covers the spectrum, and a lot of it depends on the dynamics that you're facing at the time. So, you know, we're also working with Buckeye. You know, you're all familiar with the huge growth of Buckeye, and we've done Surprise for 40 years, you know, back when Surprise was doubling in size every five years. Their council map would be radically redrawn every five years. And so, they'd do a lot of hearings, because every district was going to either double in size or be cut in half in size. If it's a big change, we do recommend a lot of hearings. In your case, you know, if you look at the map, both the L shape of the city kind of means, well, if this district's giving up or losing, it's happening to the district right next door. It's not a question of, is this district going to go north, or is it going to go west or east, like in a more square-shaped district, city. So, yeah, I wouldn't expect a ton of public interest in this. You know, it's always good to get out there and offer that opportunity, which I think is what the city clerk is proposing, is at least one. But, yeah, I don't think they'll be packing the house at any of them, which would be a driving, you need to do five or six.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, what we're, our proposal is NDC will prepare three map options for the public to consider so that they have something to start with, to meet the requirement to have equal population in each district, to start as a starting point for discussion at the community workshops. In 2011, we held six community meetings, one in each district, and the average number of attendees per meeting was only 18. Because of the short timeframe and because the community meetings are open to all residents, not just those in a specific district, we would suggest that the workshops be combined and perhaps reduce the number to three, and then, we would have, we would advertise, you know, on social media, on the website. We'd also broadcast them through Facebook Live. People watching online could submit questions and comments. We'd also take comments online. People could look at the maps, submit maps of their own, so it'd be a real interactive process. But, we found that, I think with the water rate meeting that they held, they got more online participation than actual people showing up for the meeting. So, that's really what we would encourage. But, if council is okay with three meetings, that's what we would, we would hold those in September. Then, at the workshop on October 12th, we would compile the input that we've got from the public. We'd provide the three map options at that point for council to consider, and then, at the November, I believe, November 2nd meeting.
November 9th.
November 9th meeting. At that point, you got, council could really hash out the three maps or change the maps, or at that point, we'd have a really robust council discussion, and then, hopefully, you could come to some sort of direction for staff with the final map and adopt it on November 23rd. We do have a meeting on December 14th, the day before the meeting, that we could, you know, continue the discussion if needs be, or hold a special workshop, or whatever, you know, is necessary for council to come to a decision. But, that's kind of our plan right now, realizing that it's, you know, flexible.
Thank you. And then, the last question I have at the moment relates to, as you had discussed, the minority racial makeup of the various districts, and there's been a number of significant changes in redistricting law, I guess, over the last 10 years. And just from your point of view, given Shelby and Section 5 preclearance and all of that, is retrogression still an issue, or is it a non-issue at this point? What's the, what would we be looking forward to and knowing that we need to be working within going forward here?
Yeah. So, I'd like Mr. Gruber to jump in if he has any concerns about anything I say here, but historically, the Section 5 and the retrogression avoidance was a huge focus of every effort. As you mentioned, Section 5 no longer applies to any jurisdiction. So, what we face now is Section 2, which has always been around and covers the whole country. And it really dictates that if it's possible to draw a district, or if it's possible to draw two districts where a protected class would be able to effectively elect their preferred candidates, then you, in most situations, need to draw that district or two districts if you can. So, we're not so focused on avoiding retrogression anymore, although as a specific legal question, but still, as a principle, we are aiming to avoid that and to, at least, keep the same voting strength that those groups have now, and perhaps enhance it if circumstances and neighborhoods dictate that. So, you're right, we don't have to go through the Section 5 preclearance process anymore, but the principles of the Voting Rights Act and Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act remain firmly in place, and we certainly intend to make sure we don't get in trouble on that side either.
I concur. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go back to the beginning and talk about data. You can go on a lot of websites to this day, and you can find out that the July 1st, 2019 census estimate was, for the population of Glendale, was 252,381. So, my first question would be, if you know the answer, what criteria does the Census Bureau use to arrive at its estimate?
Yeah, so, they use a variety of data. They collect all the birth and death records from every community in the country, and they also work with every county and city to collect all the housing construction and housing demolition records each year. And then, they use all that data, and I think they may get some data from the IRS as well. I don't know if they get tax filers who have reported a change of address, but sometimes they use that, sometimes they don't. So, they use all that data to compile an estimate. The births and deaths are obviously individuals, the household numbers, they're guessing at how many people are involved in each household that's built or demolished, and that's how they come up with their estimates. They also do a, what's called the American Community Survey every year. If you've gotten it, you'll remember, it's like a 30-page pamphlet asking about all kinds of stuff. But, they do that every year. I think they survey one in 15 or so households in the country every year. So, that data, and they ask people, "Have you moved recently?" So, that data also factors in. But, it's all that compilation of data that goes into their annual estimates, as opposed to the decennial census, which is the door-to-door knocking.
Based on the information you gave us for the 2020 census, their final number is 248,325, which is over 4,000 less than their estimate. So, it goes back to, what was the percentage? I heard in the 60% range of responsiveness of citizens in Glendale. Is that about accurate, somewhere in the 60% range?
I don't actually know what the self-response rate was.
I heard it was 62%. City clerk might know, but I don't.
I do not know.
Okay. I heard it was roughly 62%. That means that 38% of our population wasn't even counted.
Oh, it's a common confusion, definitely, but, so that means 68% or 62, whatever the percentage was, were the people who, when they got a mailer saying, or an email this time around, saying, "Please go on and report how many people are in your households," they did that. The 38% are then counted by the door-to-door follow-up. So, they do go door-to-door and get estimates for every household. So, they do get counted. It's just the two phases. One is self-reported, the other is in the door-to-door follow-up.
Well, what I find is totally incredible, if anybody knows about the growth that's occurred in the Yucca district, it's exploded, and yet, between the 2010 census and the 2020 census, theoretically, Yucca lost 300 people. Can you explain to me how that would have occurred between the 2010 census and the 2020 census?
Looking back, the city clerk thankfully dug up our records from 10 years ago, and it had the Yucca being at about 37,700, actually.
That was the number after redistricting, trying to make population equal. But, the actual number for Yucca, in the information provided by the city clerk, Yucca had 43,000. But the actual number for Yucca, in the information provided by the city clerk, Yucca had 43,063.
Right.
And in your current figures, it's down to 42,748. That shows a loss of approximately 300 people. How can that possibly be? Anybody who has been in the Yucca district, who has seen the explosion of growth over the 10 years, would automatically say that that number can't be right.
Right. Yeah, no, I see what you mean now. Most, most of that change, the, the map you have where this is the 43,000, that was in the old, the 2005 district lines. And so the, most of that loss, what looks like a loss, is actually people that moved into Ocatillo district.
Yeah, I lost a square mile, approximately a square mile, from 59th to 67th in the 2010. And I lost the population in that square mile.
If, if I could, I, I don't, I don't know as though arguing about what, what Yucca had and what it has is going to make any difference. That's the numbers we have to go by.
I, I know they're the numbers we have to go by, but I am suspect of the numbers that we have been given, and it's not his fault, it's the federal government's fault, because they can't seem to do anything right. But I don't believe the numbers to begin with. I don't think the numbers are accurate. I know we have to use them. But when you start with faulty data, it's, it's hard to follow through and establish a good work product.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, but he can't change what he, what we got, so.
I understand that, but I have every right to express my concern.
Certainly.
With the data that is being used, that I think the data is inaccurate, and it does not serve us well. Now, moving on, in terms of the redistricting criteria, the item most important to me is 1, 2, 3, bullet point 5. Districts known to be areas of higher-than-average population growth in the two to five years following redistricting, based upon development projects that have received final plat approval from the city, may be underpopulated. I would hope that you would under-populate Yucca district to the greatest extent possible because we already know that there are projects, for example, Stonehaven will have 1,365 homes. Out of there, probably a couple of hundred have been built to date, which means over the next 10 years, Stonehaven will be completed. There are apartments complexes that are coming in and around Westgate, and also along 99th Avenue, and up in the Desert River Project that have not been built. They, I don't even believe they've been platted yet, unfortunately. But they're going to increase the population of the Yucca district tremendously, because apart, these are apartment unit complexes of 300 units each, at 2.3 persons per unit, those numbers grow very quickly. So I would hope that as we go through this exercise, you accommodate as much future growth in the Yucca district as you possibly can. Thank you.
And to Councilmember Clark's point, I need to understand, are we, are we required by law to come up with, with the redistricting based on the census, or what we believe that the numbers actually are? Because I understand exactly what she's saying, but again, if we guess at it, then what's the use of doing a census?
Right. Yeah, and as you might imagine, this is not a Glendale-specific issue, statewide.
Yeah, I know that.
So we are writing this a lot, and you are required to use the census numbers. So that is the, the data we have to use.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I just want to make, so looking, we, we were given the 2010. Basically, the districts were, the last redistricting divided the districts up into around just under 38,000 per district, is that where we ended up? So that would show literally, though, that Cactus has grown a lot, but also Yucca has grown by over 5,000 people. It does show growth, it doesn't show that it's lost, because we're basically, I've never done this before, so I just want to make sure I understand it. We're, our starting point is whatever the redistricting was in, after the 2010 census. That's our starting point, not where we were before the 2010 census. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So a couple of questions. The September community workshops, we're on, what is today, August 24th? So we're literally right at the front door of September. Do you have potential dates already, or locations, or, I mean, that's, this is going to have to happen really, really quickly?
Well, we're looking at the week of September 20th, I believe, to give us time to advertise and time to compile everything for the October 12th council meeting, or workshop.
Okay, so Mayor, if I could, so the idea would be basically to combine, like, maybe north-central and sort of southwest part of the city, and spread the meetings out across the city?
Exactly.
Okay. Is, do you take into, so we wouldn't have an opportunity, sorry, Mayor, could I continue?
Yeah, fine.
Thank you. Could we, so we won't have an opportunity to see the three proposed maps until the October 12th workshop, is that? Or will we see the material? Obviously, there's going to be material presented to residents at these three workshops, but there's no, will, will we get that, and we know what's going out to residents, or I don't know how we're going to know that before the October 12th workshop?
Yeah, so I believe the goal, and correctly, I misspeak, but I believe the goal is to get input on how the changes should be made, and then to use that input to draft the, the proposed revised maps. I don't think we wanted to draft maps before that. I think that's the first stage, is getting that input on what changes would make sense. And then we draft the maps. You'd get them in your agenda packets, or, or whenever they'd be posted ahead of the, the workshop.
Okay.
You wouldn't be surprised at the workshop.
All right.
So I, well, I'd like to be clear, so are you asking that each council member submit what they feel needs to happen in their, their boundaries? If they do it separately, that's fine, but if we do it with a quorum, then we need to have a public meeting, which is basically right back to what you're already doing?
Yeah. The preference would be to get community feedback at those September workshops, and then to come in and, and get your feedback at that workshop.
Okay, so you're looking for community first, and then the council afterward. Okay, just wanted to be clear, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. So what kind of information and data is going to be presented to the residents so that they understand enough to be able to provide input at these meetings?
Yeah, so the focus would be the slide that showed the existing map and the which districts are over and underpopulated. So for example, Choya is under, so it needs to add people. So the question would be, you know, here's the border between Choya and Soharo. Which areas would make sense to go into the northern district, to add the populations needed? And then to move south, you know, Soharo, it's kind of a domino effect.
Yeah.
So Soharo needs to lose people to Choya. Soharo itself is, is short, so it then needs to make up the population it needs, plus the population it's given to, to Choya. So Beryl would then have to give population, and so on. So really, the focus would be along those borders. If a district needs to add population, what neighborhoods make sense to add to it? If a district needs to lose population, which districts would make sense to, to lose to, to the neighboring district?
So, Mayor, if I could continue. So honestly, though, I mean, because of, of the way, the shape of our city and the boundaries, the existing boundaries, it, at least to me, who's completely inexperienced here, but it looks relatively simple because there's only, I mean, you can only go south all the way down to where you get to the Yucca, you know, Ocatillo, you're literally very limited in, in options of, and, and also the, to me, at least, it looks relatively simple because the cities that are short are on the top, so that pushes down to where, you know, does that, does that, am I misunderstanding this, or is it, as these types of things go, is it a little bit more of a simple thing? Because the way, I mean, if the most populated areas were to the, kind of, the most, the most populated areas are contiguous, basically, and so as you move the population, move the boundaries down, it's going to make those districts smaller, or lower their population, not smaller. Well, it's going to make the district smaller, too, yeah.
Right. Correct. To the degree, we were just talking about what happened 10 years ago, you know, the moving of the one square mile moved 6,000 people from, from Yucca to Ocatillo. And none of the districts need to pick up 6,000 people, so we're not looking to move a whole square mile, kind of thing. So, yeah, it'd be more which piece of the, of the boundary makes the, the most sense, because it's unlikely that the whole boundary would just move, move south uniformly, that in almost every case, it's probably going to be too many people.
Okay.
It'll move, for example, Choya will move south, either on the west side, on the middle, or on the east side of, of the border between two districts, which one makes the most sense.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Aldama.
Thank you, Mayor. So what part of this process addresses a district having a higher efficacy voter base? So for the Ocatillo district, we, the numbers of voters is one thing, but the voters that come out is another. So how do we address that? That's the first question. I've got a second question. So how does this process take care of that?
Sure. So when the city first went to district elections, obviously, that was a big step up for the lower turnout areas. And it sounds a little counterintuitive, but as you just mentioned, to empower an area that's relatively lower turnout, you put lower turnout voters together in one district, to some degree, that's what happens in Ocatillo now. So when we're redrawing the lines, what we want to be careful of is not to flood that, flood those relatively lower turnout areas with a neighborhood that's really high turnout. Because if you put a neighborhood in that, you know, where turnout's twice as high, well, you're really going to dilute their voter strength, and the, of the existing voters. So if there are neighboring areas that have similar demographics and similar turnout patterns, then those would be the areas that we prefer to put in, if it makes sense from a neighborhood perspective, rather than something radically different.
Yeah, your explanation is counterintuitive, too, to my question, because what you just said, you don't want to dilute it, but that's actually helping the district to get more active voters in the district. So, and you didn't answer, you didn't address the question, you just, really counterintuitive to it. So then the second question is, the Ocatillo district has a lot of land area that's industrial, no voters whatsoever. So how, how does this process address that? So we have a lot of spaces, we're just no, no voters at all. Let's just take downtown is one of them, we have a, it's a, it's a great downtown, obviously, but the voter base there is very low, because not all business owners live in the district. So how does that ever get addressed? So the district isn't going to grow, obviously, too much, so our voter base is going to remain the same. Based on your first answer, and then my question, the second one.
Yeah, so one of the challenges is, as you mentioned, it, you know, it's almost perfectly balanced as is. The challenge is, is that it's the only district that borders Yucca. So it will have to move west to pick up that population from Yucca, so it'll have to move, even though it doesn't need to on its own numbers. So we will have to look at what areas come in and go out. The downtown and the other industrial areas question actually somewhat relates to your first question as well of, you know, it, it is a, a common consideration to look at, should each district have its own kind of economic center? You know, its own kind of area that brings economic activity, jobs, things like that into the district. So industrial downtown areas can factor in in that way, if we want to be sure that there, there is some economic center to each district. You don't have to, it's not required, but you can consider that. They also provide, you know, from purely a number side, flexibility, because if they move from one district to another, there's no impact on the population numbers. So if you wanted to move a neighborhood, you could connect it to a district that you wanted to move by adding in a zero-population bridge, I think. It's not recommend, it's not something we'd advocate for, but it could be useful for achieving another goal.
Yeah, so you, you bring up an interesting comment. I spoke with our city attorney, who's not here today, and I brought up to him what you just mentioned was, some of those areas that I mentioned, like the light industrial areas, yes, you're representing those light industrial businesses, but shouldn't those areas be an area where the representation comes from the entire data, it's not just the one council member, therefore, the district can be broadened more, then you get more voter turnout. So it sounds like you can do that, but it would have to be the, the council wishes to do so. And how often has that ever happened in, in, in your experience?
It, it varies. Nevada has an interesting rule, which is if there's a redevelopment district, the funds generated by the redevelopment district have to be spent in the council district where the redevelopment district is. So as you might imagine, that leads to redistricting wars. That's a lot of finances for a council to be able to channel to their district. So that's kind of an extreme case, where really, the economic centers are the focus of redistricting. Most jurisdictions, it varies. In jurisdictions where council members are very parochial, you know, they really defer to the other council members on any decision that's based in their district, then there tends to be a lot of attention on who has the port, you know, who has the, who gets the pieces that generate the revenue and that generate, you know, the activity. In other jurisdictions where it's more collegial, where everyone, you know, kind of, well, I represent this district, but we're all really here for the city as a whole, and people are more involved, and there's more give and take, and less deference to whose district is this, they should decide, then it's less of a concern. So it really varies, depending on the, the priorities of each council. So it's completely up to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I just want to back up to the, the conversation about low-frequency voters. So what you're saying is that you, it's to the detriment, literally, of an existing district to take a district that has historically low voter turnout and then move it or add a higher voter turnout boundaries in there, because they can literally flip the district. That's what, that's what literally just about every argument about redistricting that's ever happened is about, isn't it?
You can move some areas in, as long as they don't overwhelm the, the kind of protected class voters in that area. So the small changes are not going to be a detriment. It's only when you kind of flip the voting behavior of the district as a whole that it becomes detrimental in the eyes of the Voting Rights Act.
So, Mayor, when you're looking at this, you're looking at not just the population, and you're also looking at voter frequency? Is that part of what goes into the formula to figure out how to move the boundaries?
To a degree, it's, it's a bigger picture than that. We're looking at a whole socioeconomic profile of the different neighborhoods. So, you know, whether renters, homeowners, you know, citizenship levels, all of those kinds of factors all play into it.
But I'd like to clarify, the voting is not part of the formula. You, you can't redistrict because people vote or people don't vote. It's by population, and then by groups of people, correct?
In the Voting Rights Act analysis, the federal analysis of compliance, turnout levels can be a factor. So I, I'd never say never. And we would want to kind of be conscious of where there are really high-turnout neighborhoods, and be careful not to overwhelm a relatively lower turnout Voting Rights Act-sensitive district with the, with those high-turnout voters that would then impact the Voting Rights Act compliance. So it's not something that is a high priority, it's not something that we're, like, checking the numbers as we run it. It's more knowing that which neighborhoods are we looking at along the border, and deciding which ones would make the best match. If we have to move one in, which one is the best match to move in?
So somewhere in the process, so you would at least look at our, the canvas of recent votes and see, like, where are the high advocacy, where are the low advocacy? I mean, the whole idea is that you don't take a district and basically turn off their microphone, where they don't have a voice anymore.
Right.
Right?
Exactly, yeah. And, and I think looking, you know, we haven't done a detailed study at this point in the process, but I think looking at the general take of your districts, moving 1,300 people into one seat and out of another isn't going to swing, you know, the entire makeup of the other district.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just would have one request or one comment. I think it might be beneficial for those council members who choose to do so to have a meeting with you, or a representative from your, your entity to discuss further and to, if they've got any bounty... they've got any boundary suggestions in mind, suggest them at that time to you. So if at all possible, dependent upon which council members would like to, I would like to, for one, schedule meetings with us individually.
We can certainly take that direction and work with city staff on how we want to proceed on that.
Thank you, that would be appreciated.
Any other comments? Any other questions?
Mayor and Council. So with regard to the redistricting criteria, do you want to keep the same criteria as we used 10 years ago?
Mayor, as far as I'm concerned, yes, as long as they're mindful of the future growth in the Yucca district, yes.
Everybody has a copy of that, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So is there a consensus on keeping the same? Yeah, okay.
Right, and then a consensus on the mapping tools, we'll use all three
Yes.
types of tools?
Seems to be, yes.
Yes.
And then, Mayor, the number of community workshops, is three sufficient?
We'll find out.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just for clarity, would that be like one before draft maps and then two after, or?
No, it'd be three meetings before, three meetings throughout the city in the month of September to get public input for the map, you know, the district boundaries, and we would bring that information back to council with three proposed maps.
Okay, so that's three before draft, before drafting occurs. And then after the draft maps are available and publicized, would we have any more community meetings?
We need to, yeah.
Get input on what people think of the drafts and then...
Yeah, exactly.
Well, Mayor, Council, we had discussed creating three draft maps to take to the community so that they'd have a starting point, so we could
That's what I asked.
Do that.
Yeah, that's the other approach, is we could do our draft maps before the September hearings and...
I think you need to do...
So the community would have something to work with, okay.
Mayor? I support Councilmember Clark's request on meeting with the consultant. I wasn't on the council in 2010, but I came to many of the meetings and was involved in the redistricting, and I'm very confident that that's what occurred, the consultant met with each council member. So I would support that, and I think it's very important that we do that, but that we do it before your draft, it comes out to the entire council. So we should have that one-on-one with the consultant before the draft, so he can listen to all of our input, and then they'll draw up the drafts, then we can take a look.
And then go to the public and then come back to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was my earlier question.
Thank you, Mayor. That was my earlier question, too. I had asked if we're going to have an opportunity to see the three maps that were discussed that were being proposed, presented at these public meetings, so are we going to see those before the public meetings? At least just even an email? I mean, I don't know that it's really, you know, necessary that I meet with you, but I would like to see the content of the public meeting before the meeting, so we know what's out there. Because we're probably going to hear from constituents, so...
Of course.
Yeah, so I mean, I'd like to know what they're being presented with. Thank you.
Yes.
I agree with Councilmember Aldama on meeting with each of the council members, I think that's important. And also, I think having, I guess it's a question, when will the maps, the simple online community mapping tool, be available? When's the soonest it could be available?
We have to work with the server folks on that, so it's all dependent on how busy they are, one day to another. So sometimes they turn it around in 36 hours, sometimes it takes a week and a half, so...
Okay, next week's fine, thanks.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Back to the meeting schedule, the public meetings. It seems like, to me, like it would be a good practice to have an opportunity for our residents to have input before any drafts are drawn, so that there's no
No.
working against any, anything. And then take that information, create the drafts, and then get feedback from the public on it. I know that's the model the state uses, is they conduct public hearings around the state to get input, and then they draft maps, and then they go back, or they have the option of going back to more public hearings. But it seems to me like it would be useful, I mean, as we said earlier, this is a voter-driven process, and that we ought, the consultant ought at least hear from voters what they would like to see happen, and then move forward from there.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmembers, if I may, typically, that is kind of a multi-stage phase. The challenge is, going back to the earlier presentation, is that the census has put us in such a box. Normally, we have six to eight months for this process, so given the timing and when this data has come out, I think we're kind of, you've seen the timeline in here, it's pretty tight to make a decision, so I think you kind of have to just do the first wave, and then obviously, the public can participate in your council deliberations as well. But we could do it either way, with the first round of meetings with draft maps or without.
Mayor?
Yep. Hold on, were you done?
For the moment.
Okay. I think everybody needs to really seriously keep in mind about the timeline. We can't end up having six meetings, we just can't. So I'm going to ask everybody today to figure out, you know, how many meetings and what meetings. I don't have a problem going to the public first, as long as then when it doesn't come to us, and then go back to the public. Or come to us and then go to the public, but let's not keep going back and forth, or we're never going to get this done, ever. So somebody come up with a suggestion that we can accomplish both and still have this adoption by November 23rd.
Mayor?
Okay, you were next, go ahead.
Thank you. In my mind, I see the consultant meeting with those council members that wish to participate on an individual basis, followed by the consultant drafting of three maps to present to the public, because I think we will generate more comment if the public has something to react to. If they see that their neighborhood is staying in the Choya district and not moving to Soharo, you may never hear from them. But if a neighborhood is being moved into another district, they may feel compelled to comment. If you wait until you get their comment and then the draft maps, as the mayor suggested, that's too long of a process. We don't have that kind of time. So I would prefer that there are draft maps to present to the public and let them react to those, and then come to council in a workshop, and you will have the feedback from the public on those three draft maps. It makes far more sense. Thank you, Mayor.
And I would agree mostly with that as well. The thing, I guess I would be concerned about would be, or not really concerned, it's more of a fact you've stated, these aren't major changes that we can accommodate, and we could come up with several scenarios pretty easily that would accommodate these changes that we're needing. If this were a major redistricting, I could see going, having meetings before, meetings after, but this isn't really a major redistricting, based on the numbers that you said are not that significant, in moving from one district to another. So I think having the maps prepared ahead of time would be beneficial for the community to see, here are some possibilities of how your neighborhood would be affected if, with these different, again, I'm looking at the map, there's only certain way you could, there's only a few ways you can draw. And so I think three maps would probably accommodate almost all of those ways. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and I too can support that schedule, and here's why. Our citizens are just like us, we're not completely, I'm not trying to offend them, but we're not experts at redistricting. So for you to bring a map that's already detailed, it allows them to look at and edit with you. So that is why I support it. So I'm comfortable with what Clark and Malnare asked for. I'm supportive of that schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. We're not, you know, I mean, the state's looking, you know, looking at congressional districts and stuff that's, you know, bigger, way bigger boundaries, and so I'm fine. I think a lot of people are visual, and I think this process is complex enough that without the visual aid of seeing possibilities, and just because they're being presented, it doesn't mean that's going to be the final version of it, but it gives them some kind of a concept of, when you look at this, there's like Councilmember Malnare said, there's, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, you know, south and west, I mean, there's not a whole lot of places we can go with this. So I think probably, we could even just have them say, make sure it says sample, or make sure it's clear to them that these are just proposed boundaries, and that that's why you're here, is to, and then also make sure that we get that data, whatever's being presented to them, at least the day before, that it, that the first meeting, so that if we start hearing from people, we know what's been presented to them. Thank you.
Okay, anybody over here? No? Okay, so I'm just going to ask, is it possible that we can have the ability for you folks to meet with this council in the month of September and have all those meetings done?
We'll get it done. We may have to do it virtually, you know, we may not be able to be onsite, but we can certainly, you know, share screens, have the map on the screen and talk.
If you could do that with the seven of us, then that solves that, and then that would give us a chance for you to get your maps done. We can come back to workshop with that map? Or, no, we wouldn't need to do that, would we? So we'd want to do a public meeting in October?
September, three public meetings in September.
Right.
Three public meetings.
Okay, so now you're talking about the seven of us, plus three public meetings, all in the same month of September. Is that possible?
Welcome to our lives these days, but yes.
Okay, because...
Essentially, we would get each of your seven meetings done the first two weeks of September while the clerk is publicizing.
Okay, why don't we do this, then? Why don't, why don't we just all commit that we're all going to talk with you the first week of September, to give you some time? Does that work for everybody?
It's on their schedule.
We can...
Well, they, yeah, they got a lot of other stuff they're going to have to. Does that work for the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so first week of September, you'll meet with all of us, whether it's virtually or in person, and then you can, we can arrange those public meetings through our clerk.
Yeah, all those, they waste you.
Okay, and then I have one final question for the council. Is there anybody on this council that lives within a half a mile of any one of the current lines right now?
Yes.
There is?
Yeah.
This could be interesting. Okay.
I'm like one block.
Oh, really? Wow, go ahead.
You can, you can move into Choya, that's fine, Ray.
My due date's one south.
Oh, okay, that's right, yeah, that's not going to affect you. I just want to, so the public meetings, essentially, the consultant would be, so they're basically going to be basically back-to-back, because they're going to be coming from California, so we'd be looking at probably like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or something in the week of September 20th, is that?
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff, yes, that's kind of what we planned.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilwoman, I'm from California, I actually live here in Arizona, so we have local people, too.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, you got what you need?
I think so.
You have what you need?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, so we're done with that, moving on to city manager report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Just two quick items for note. First, I want to give you an update on the Crystal Island project. Right now, they are, you know, pouring cement, and they're making tremendous progress. Right now, they have almost 60% of the entire sub-foundation for the main hotel poured, and they expect to have the other two underground parking garages, as well as the additional hotel foundations, completed and poured within the next two weeks. Seeing the timeline for the project, they're still looking to turn, the most complicated part of the project is the main hotel, and they're looking at having that topped out in steel in January, and they're still on track for having that turned over to the operator on December 2nd, is the current schedule they have there. And obviously, things can affect that, but that's moving along fine. Next time you're out that way, you'll see a lot of activity taking place there. Second thing is, you'll start seeing these posters starting to show up around town as we're getting ready to kick off our Live at Murphy Park series for October. So we're real excited about this. This is in a better weather time of year than when we did the first time around, and we've got a great lineup of acts that are on board. Just to give you a couple of the bigger ones, on October 7th, we have Blaine Long, and he was on The Voice, Season 11, and at one time had the number-two charting song on iTunes based on that, and he'll be here on October 7th. Ritmo Latino, which is Andres Martinez, which is a Phoenix-based artist from Sonora, Mexico, although he's, will be performing here, hasn't performed here since 2008, so this will have, he has a huge following, and we expect to see a real large turnout coming there. And then Falluca, which is a group that has a large fan base here in Arizona, they oftentimes sell out the Marquee Theater in Tempe, and they'll be here on October 23rd. We'll be announcing the entire slate here next week, and you'll be seeing posters coming up, but again, as in the past, hope you'll get a chance to attend and take in the festivities. And again, this, every time we do these, we're getting more data points in terms of, you know, the success of this program, but again, staff is working hard on this, and we are expecting a great Live at Murphy Park series. And with that, Mr. Mayor, it concludes my report.
Thank you. City Attorney's report?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Council item, special interest, any council items anyone would like to discuss at a future workshop? Mr. Aldama?
None at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Tomachoff?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a resident come in and speak at the citizens' comments of the last voting meeting with regard to the cell tower at Fire Station 156, so I'd like to have, put that on the possibility for a discussion, the lease is up for renewal in February, but I believe our charter basically directs us to bring it, bring it forward once we've been asked by a citizen, so I'd like to have a discussion with the council on the cell tower release at Station 156. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Turner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
I have nothing. Can I get, do we need an exec session today? Oh, well, then I don't want a motion. Okay, there being no further business for this council, meeting will be adjourned, and we'll be back here in less than two hours.